Nicole, take roll call, please.
Bodie.
I'm here.
Catchatory.
Here.
Carberry Montgomery.
Here.
Kroll.
Here.
Rosendahl.
Here.
All right, thank you. I will dispose of the actual reading of the character count statement, but note that we are operating under those principles. Item three is to approve the agendas, your motion.
So moved.
By Rosendahl?
Second.
Second by Bodie. Discussion, roll call.
Rosendahl?
Yes.
Bodie?
Yes.
Carberry Montgomery?
Yes.
Catchatory?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, the reason we're here tonight is to review the 2026 to 2031 CIP, and we're going to start off here, and I'm going to turn it over to David to kick us off. Or who's going to start?
Jump right in, yeah.
Jan's up first.
Dave, what if we want you to read the transmittal letter, top to bottom, for us?
I mean, I guess I would like to read it. I'm sorry, but...
Maybe, David, maybe get just a brief executive summary. How about that?
Sure, sure. No, yeah, no. The, the main thing I think we want to talk a little bit about is we've had a series of meetings as a team going through the capital improvement plan. This is our, our first shake at CIP with me as a city manager. We did, you'll notice, a lot of the projects moved, moved around from the last CIP. You know, there's, there are a number of projects that were in the outer years previously that we have moved up. We think we can, we can accomplish that. There, there was a balance, kind of on the finance side, the balances. You know, we want to take advantage of all the great work the council's done on using lost, but we also have a very robust set of needs on the capital side. So we're trying to find a middle ground there rather than using all the lost, you know, using all of the, the funding sources available and not borrowing any money. I know that, that eventually is the goal, is to not have to issue geo bonds. But we really believe with the magnitude of the projects that are needed and the fact that our, that our finances are in great shape, we're trying to take a little bit more of a measured approach to that over the next few years rather than jump, jump in. There still should be some relief on the debt service side. We won't have final numbers until January. I think the transmittal letter references a four cent reduction in that. We'll get final numbers in January. And then, of course, we may have recommendations to move some of that debt service levy into other areas. But basically, you know, I would consider this a robust capital improvement program. There's lots of parks and recreation projects in there. The, the street projects will come next time, but we have, I think, a pretty good balance on the finance side and the project side. The thing I would just mention is that if, if, as we come through the projects, everything has a delicate balance to it. Nikki will, you know, will be able to take, if there's something that the council would like to consider moving, we could certainly come back and, and give some suggestions on what might have to move back in order to make all that, depending on the financing source. But the main thing is that I wanted to talk about was that I know there was a lot of discussion about kind of, you know, going straight into the approach where we're not issuing geo bonds. I really believe with the number of projects that we have, the need to get some West Side projects done, and just the fact that we're in really, really excellent financial shape overall, just taking a more measured approach makes a little more sense. Issuing some bonds, also preserving some of the cash that's on hand and that will be on hand over the next couple of years to help buy down the cost of the referendum. Because, you know, we, we will not likely see in our time in these roles a project with the cost of the Urbandale Police Department headquarters. And so we, we took a lot of effort to try to, in the back of our minds, of course, that project has to move forward in the next eight or nine months with discussion about a referendum. But we really want to make sure that we are well positioned cash-wise to be able to balance the need, you know, the sticker shock that just inadvertently will come with that project with the fact that we do have some cash on hand. We do, we will have some additional cash on hand coming in. We believe the referendum story will be a much more successful one if we use all of our resources rather than borrowing all the money, if that makes sense.
I have a couple of over our shing questions. So when we discussed moving to this format where we don't have a citizen committee reviewing this, I voiced my concern that I wanted to make sure that we were giving our boards and commissions opportunity to review the document and the public to review the document. I think this year we lived a very long month or two of people responding to decisions that we made in our capital improvements budget on Aurora and because people didn't know we were doing this. And we can only do so much. Derek can only do so much. He loves it when I call him out. But I guess I just want to know what we are doing to engage the boards and commissions and also the public, because as you can see, it's, they're not here. And even the people on the CIP committee that I thought might be here are not here, so...
Who's that? John?
John.
Well, he's, he's not doing too well.
Oh, okay. I was not aware of that. But, and I'm sorry to hear that. But I guess I'd like to know what, what we're doing.
Well, we, a number of things. The mayor sent a letter to the, to the previous members, committee members, letting them know of the new process and when the meetings were.
I was not made aware of that.
Inviting.
As a previous member.
You knew the meeting was here and you knew of the new system. So I think the focus was on the non-elected members. And I, I will miss something so staff can fill in, but we, there was also discussion. I know the Parks Commission and their, so, I mean, the people that were the most, I would say, most engaged before, there was a concerted effort to make sure that they were aware of the new plan. The mayor had direct contact with the people that were on the, that were on the committee, the non-elected officials that were on the committee. You know, from an engagement standpoint, you can, you can shout it from the mountaintops that you're having a CIP meeting, but, you know, having been through 27 or 28 of these, Bridget, I just, you're not going to get probably a lot of folks to come and participate. Now, if we fed them, you know, maybe that might change things. But you typically don't. You typically get more citizen feedback from individual decisions you do and don't make as opposed to, oh, come to a two-hour meeting and let your voices be heard. But, you know, everything's online. It was very accessible. This process is pretty consistent. I mean, many cities in the metro use a work session process where people can come and engage. It's not too late to engage. We have another one a week from Tuesday, and, you know, we've certainly done what we can. I, I can count on, you know, probably one or two hands, the number of folks who, who have come over the years. I think pickleball was one. That there, you know, they, there was a group of people who wanted pickleball in another community that I worked in a while ago, and, and they came to the meeting. But typically, that's, you know, you, you're going to skip more engagement from the public based on something you do or don't do as a result of this process as opposed to inviting folks to come and hear about lots of projects over four or five hours over two different meetings.
Well, we still had an opportunity for six or seven people in the community to be very involved in that. And I, I appreciate that the council is going to be more involved in it this time. But I also think, I mean, I would really like to see at the Plan and Zoning Commission and Parks Board and the Art, Public Art Commission, the staff go over their particular portions.
The Parks Commission, they did that for sure.
Okay.
Yeah. Plan and Zone, I mean, we could certainly, I mean, Plan and Zoning, I, I don't know if there was any direct engagement, but Plan and Zoning typically, you know, would that be street projects primarily, Bridget, or...
I guess, I mean, they're the, the lead board and commission in my mind, you know, and they take their role on this commission very seriously, I think, so...
No, we can certainly make sure they're well informed as to, you know, as to the process, but I...
I'm just, I, I feel like we've gone from one extreme to the other. And I would like to find, but even knowing that Jan talked to Parks Commission is more than I knew what, before I asked this. So I just want to know more information, I guess, to make sure that we're reaching out in a positive way instead of being told that we're doing everything wrong.
Well, and the other thing that I would just mention that's not a direct answer to your question, Bridget, is that you'll notice in the plan itself, a lot of attention to engagement in general. So, for example, in, where we've recommended projects for the outer years, but we don't yet have, haven't engaged the public in exactly what they would like to see. There's an intermediate step of actually studying that and doing the engagement so that we don't rush too many projects without that level of engagement. But specific to Plan and Zoning, we can certainly put our heads together. But, you know, that would be, that would be a group we can, we can make some tweaks, if that's what you'd like to see, Bridget.
I just, I've said my piece. I don't know if anyone else...
I, I would make sure that everybody looks at Tim Fitzgerald's email. He put a very comprehensive, detailed review of a bunch of different things and has some feedback, too, so that's, I appreciate it.
Saw that, but I have not read it yet.
Haven't gotten a chance to read it all the way through yet, but, yeah. Some good feedback.
Certainly, we're going to have, you know, we'll have a public hearing on this as well, eventually on this as well, so we will make every effort to, to get that public input, so...
Yeah.
All right. Well, with that, ready to start? Art, Jan?
It's fun to start off this whole new process here. So, and public art should be an easy one. We are continuing to propose $25,000 a year for public art. The Public Art Committee, I think we have one of the most engaged committees that we've had since Blake, of course, but actually in December, we'll be having our annual strategic planning of what we're going to be doing in the next 12 months and where we're going to commit our resources, both financially as well as their time. So happy to answer any questions about public art.
Is there, I, I know recently we had made the shift to $25,000 a year just to kind of reduce some of the variability. Is there kind of a consideration for, just generally with how inflation goes along, just making sure that we continue kind of a proportional investment in public art?
We haven't discussed that. I think we have looked at, the Public Art Committee responds to or looks at the, the funding that we have available. And is it something where we'd like to commission a piece? Or, or they've done a great job when we do that is seek alternative funding, Bravo and, and other funding to make that happen. So that's certainly something that I can bring up for next year's budget process and asking. And we also have, as you know, the, the operating budget request as well. So outside the capital funds, which this year will remain status quo on that area. But certainly something as we move forward, art is not getting cheaper either. But they've seemed to work great within the parameters that we've set.
Not, not specific to the art issue, but we did have a couple of lengthy discussions this year about, you know, identifying the areas where we're seeing the cost pressures rather than doing an across-the-board. You know, there's like some street projects, I mean, it, you know, there's some projects that lend themselves to an inflationary factor and some that don't. So I think for next year, that is something we expect to have more conversation with. But I think this one had some balance, too, if I remember right, had some balance available to it. But as a, as a goal moving forward, I do think it's important to identify the areas where we're seeing the, the inflationary factors and looking at, you know, if we're doing X amount of dollars over a five-year period, maybe going in and doing a 3%. We do that in a couple of places, but we're, we're going to look at that more closely, I think, prior to next year.
I would definitely be, I mean, I am continually impressed with the abilities of the Public Art Committee to do amazing things with $25,000 and access to some grants, you know. So I think, you know, what if we had 30, you know? I think Jan would blow our brains, you know, blow our minds, so...
Hey, you know, and additional funding, I'm always for.
So, I mean, I would, I would guess this is an area that, you know, we don't need to increase it $5,000 every year, but, you know, it is such a small amount. And I know that they do amazing things that are very, very visible in our community. And I think our community really responds to it. So I would like to see some consideration given to that next year, I guess.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with consideration being a future thing.
Yeah, I'd support that, too. They really do a great job of leveraging the resources they get.
So operationally, do I understand that we allocate $25,000 a year to the Public Art Committee? And they, that's their budget, and they...
Along with some operating funds, but like, some, this specifically would go toward like long-term pieces, but I think also there's a component of this where it's like the part, part of it goes into the maintenance for the existing pieces, too, right?
Yeah, I saw 10% is for maintenance.
Yeah, and this is one, obviously, like the other, if we don't spend it, it accumulates.
There's a balance there right now.
And that's what the committee is looking at, a larger project. So you need to accumulate over a few years, so. And that might be something, too, is as we look at our strategic plan, if it's a larger project they'd like to do in the next, you know, two to four years, that's something that we can present then at a future CIP of saying this is a larger project for consideration.
And Bravo's recently increased, I think, some of their funding percentages, I think to 75% from 50. Don't hold me to that, but...
That sounds right.
And I think next week's another, another big announcement for Bravo.
Yeah, Monday, we find out if our request has been accepted or not.
I don't know anything. Our meeting is on one day and I don't have a packet, so I can't tell you anyway.
All right. We covered that, so we move on to buildings? Let's cover them buildings. Tag team, right? Forty-one replacement first and forty-two renovations, and then the police station.
Proper agenda with it. Don't make me the first.
So, good evening, all. Since it's a new format, we have no idea what we're supposed to say. So, within the building fund. Okay. You're not going to stay here and run this?
No.
Okay, so not a new project, just a continuation and a little bit more assigned in terms of timing is the Station 41 replacement. As you're aware, we talked previously, that building has reached sort of its end of life. And based on the analysis done about three years ago, a relocation place was identified, a site in the Meredith and 86th where we have now purchased property. The CIP outlines the timeframe for replacement for that building and then actually how it's proposed that we're going to pay for. So, any questions about the payment, I will turn over to Nikki. Anything about the building, I would be happy to share. Other than the fact that square footage-wise and space allocation is primarily based on what we did out at Station 43. The, the site will dictate specifics, but that's generally the amount of space and needs that we're going to have, so...
Do we have, as part of the replacement of 41, do we have a consideration yet of what would old 41 look like for the community going forward?
No. I've been approached by a couple of different people with different ideas, but nothing has been definitely decided or discussed at any type of formal level.
If you're available to be approached, I have a number of ideas.
I believe you've already talked to me about a couple of those, so...
But it's a pretty significant thing to think about, considering where it's located.
It is.
Right.
Some strategic opportunities there.
Yeah.
And on the finance side, just mentioned that we're not proposing a referendum on the fire station side, so just, I know there'd been some discussion. And I think there was one question about operating costs. And we can talk about that real quickly. Just on the police side, we, we know we're going to have to do some operating cost projections. We've, we've not undertaken that yet, but we will. On the fire department side, this is not really going to, you know, be something that we would necessarily do a sophisticated operating cost analysis on because it's, you're replacing one with the other. So I know that, I think that was one of the questions, maybe from Tim.
The budget impact says there would be a significant increase in operating cost. I was wondering if that was kind of a typo.
Well, there...
Do you think there would be a significant increase?
On the fire station, that, that's a mistake. Yeah, that, the police station, I would say, there should be three exclamation points after that. With the, with the fire headquarters, I would say that's, that's a mistake.
No, I, I would anticipate slight increase just because of square footage difference. But other than that, all the other operating costs for the station, people, equipment, everything we need to put in it is already in our current facility and will either be moved or upgraded, so...
Okay.
Probably wouldn't be, wouldn't hurt to do like a really light review.
Well, yeah, we'll take a look. I just didn't, yeah, the, I think there were questions that came in on those two projects. I would say the bulk of our time will be spent on making sure that we have the police headquarters clamped down because, you know, the size difference and so forth, but yeah. But no referendum is recommended for that project. We can pay for it other ways.
From, from a loss perspective, is this about half of, or like, what, what approximate percentage of local option is this accounting for, for 28?
So this is why, as David referenced, that we're not going to do the full amount of CIP funding. I'm setting that aside from funds that we have today to allocate. I mean, little less because we'll have interest earnings, obviously, on it. So that's why. We're, we know that that is a big out-year project. Otherwise, you'll only see lost in the current year because we're only spending what we have already on hand. If you remember that process, we, we don't sign contracts for things that we don't have cash on hand for it. So this is setting aside what we've already got. But in a given year, we're, we're sitting right about $10 million total. That's in today dollars, so I would say by then we'll probably be around 12 million. So it's about half of our lost intake.
Okay. And I think I had a question on the finance side, just generally of like, where is, where is the lost, I think is one of my, one of my notes. In 27, 29, and 30, just generally, so that's kind of that idea.
That's why. So we'll only use what I have, so I have $10.5 million sitting in, in the lost account right now. So that's why we went through that. We're putting $4 million aside for the police station in there. We've got five-ish million of it sitting for what we're going to plan for the fire station. And then the rest, we went through and pulled out $5 million. We're going to do a geo for right at $5 million. Everything else is being paid with lost.
Gotcha.
So that's, so you'll only see it in the one year because it's not money I have today, right? So I want to make sure if something happens legislatively or any other potential, we're planning not for having lost in the future. It's, it's a excess, like icing-on-the-cake type thing. If we've got that, we can avoid geo, but it'll be in a, just an instant flip from one to the other once I know how much I have to work with. So that's kind of the background of it, so you'll only ever see it in that first year. This is the one exception because we're not going to do a referendum for it. So we need to make sure we know what that funding is locked in for. So it'll take it out of that 28 year, and it'll be almost half of it, which is 50%. You're, I'm not going to levy for it. That's, that's the huge instant tax savings is we will not need to levy for it.
And so you are, and so the plan there then is the 28 fiscal year sales tax would go into that project, or is it like us saving up and using it then?
I have, I have about $3 million of it now that's going to sit in there and start accumulating. And we'll just kind of see where we're at for some, we, we look really good right now. Our loss numbers are pretty good. So if we have in excess of that, so the $10.5 million is what I have today, like October, when we're doing this. So I have the rest of this year to go, and so we'll start feeding that into that balance. And then 27 will do the same thing. So that 28, it should be less than half of what we bring in for that year, but it's effectively half of 27 because I'm going to have to have it in place for the 28 contract.
Yeah, sounds good.
So it's just kind of a little juggling act to try to get it in there. So we weren't able to say cold turkey, we're going to use all 10 million and I'm not going to issue any geo. It just didn't quite make sense, knowing we've got these couple of big projects that we would really like to be able to use the lost for, buying down the referendum as well as this police, or the fire station piece with no debt impact. I mean, that's pretty potent, especially since that's what got lost in the first place. You know, we bought and paid off that other fire station. It's like a really good fit.
Let's hope we get to keep our lost.
Yes, let's hope we keep it. Very helpful.
So this end of the table has all made notes that say solar, question mark. And maybe that end of the table, I'm seeing a head nod. So, you know, we had the plan presented to us and I don't think there was a consensus on the council to not do anything, even though that might have been the recommendation. So I'm bringing it up now in whether the replacement of Fire Station 41 is the appropriate place to have this discussion, or...
Are we waiting to the next page on 42, or...
Yeah, so... I think including solar in our new projects is something that is personally important to me. And I think the consensus of those I've talked to, it is important to them as well. So I want to make sure that those issues are being discussed as we move forward with building and we are going back and retrofitting the Parks and Public Works building with solar panels.
Well, and I'll be a little more blunt. I'd really like to see a solar project included in our CIP in the next couple of years. And I'd like it to be clearly spelled out that it will be using solar. And I, I really hope we can figure out how to do that. The project 40, the Station 42 renovations, it wasn't directly related to these, but there was a, a suggestion for Station 42 would be a good fit. So that might be something to consider. I just, I just really think it's something we need to take responsibility to pull off.
Sure. And on, on the police headquarters, we've had some preliminary conversations with the architect. In fact, the architect, I thought, that's being recommended, the agreements on the agenda tomorrow night, had the most comprehensive approach on the environmental issues. You know, we talked about doing ad alternates on, on that project. And that way, the council can make a real-time, game-time decision about, you know, is it worth X amount of dollars to do? There's a couple of different ways to look at that, and I know a couple of other cities have done that on their, specifically, at least one on their public safety, their public safety buildings. The idea around a specific project outside of that, we don't have anything recommended in, in the CIP on solar for, for a standalone project. We still owe the council the follow-up from the discussion that we had on the kind of performance of the existing project. And the staff-level information has been provided. We just haven't had a chance to really pull all that together and bring it forward. And so we still hope to do that here in the next few months. And I don't think it would, it would preclude anything from, you know, being in the CIP down the road, but we, we just haven't had a chance to do that. But I think the real opportunity, and, and, you know, maybe it's an and and not an or, Pat, but, but I think the real opportunity is, you know, we're building these new buildings and we expect that we would have the ability to do ad alternates when we're doing the projects. And then the council can really see a dollar amount associated with that project and make a real-time decision. You know, some of the other things, you could certainly do something small. I mean, we could do something, you know, a smaller project and, and squeeze it in somehow in, in there. I just, you know, the takeaway from that conversation that we had at the last meeting was we, we really want to get the information on the project that you've already invested in to you before we, you know, just threw something in as a project.
Well, I, I do recall, you're, Blake's the one that reminded me that it was Station 42. I couldn't remember which station. But there, it, it looked like a really likely possibility, based on the math that was in that report, that it would actually have a simple payback that was worth pursuing. And that's what you guys were going to check on. So, but that would...
And we can do, we can do that before we would ever sign and seal documents with an architect to, to do anything with that. I mean, I think we can...
Yeah, they had it. I mean, that report almost had that thing half-designed. I can't remember what it was exactly, but it was pretty close to ready to go. Anyway...
And I'll have to, and I'll have to go back and refresh my memory. Are you talking about the consultant, the solar consultants?
Right, right. But they did some serious work on it to set it up so that it would be doable.
And we can, we can look at that in addition to the act... And we can, we can look at that in addition to the actual performance of what's going on at the Public Works and Parks facility too and provide that information. We just haven't had a chance. The honest answer is we haven't had a chance to do it.
Anyway, I'd like it to be an and if possible.
With the 41 replacement, is this, I mean, I feel like this might be an opportunity if it's not a significant increase in design and deposit area. Could we have that, like the solar aspect of it be in, like considered in here as an ad alternate option? Cause then we can at least consider that.
On the new, on the new building?
On, yeah, on like the 41 replacement.
That's, that's, that, yeah, that was my recommendation in the beginning was to really focus on, as you're undertaking projects from scratch, from, from the outset, there are ways, they're not no-cost ways, but they're low-cost ways to work ad alternates into the bidding process where you have really good information in front of you as to, you know, whether or not you wanna invest that level of capital above and beyond the baseline project. And I, I, I think that's a much, you know, more financially sustainable approach rather than going out and trying to retrofit the projects that are already in the ground.
I think that makes sense. Could it, I mean, would you recommend if that's kind of the idea that we'd wanna have that considered as an ad alternate to have that noted?
Oh, in the CIP itself?
Yeah, like on the project pages, say, like-
Sure.
It would be, you know, like the interest of the council would be to have that ad alternate considered-
Sure.
As part of-
And on the police headquarters, I mean, Curtis is back there. He, Curtis nod, up or down?
Yeah, like just that general idea.
How many times have we discussed this already? And we don't even have an architect yet. So, I mean, our, yeah, our, our, the expectation is that we would, we would like to bring opportunities for the council to consider, but a more complete decision package where you actually know it's going to cost this and this is about, you know, what the payback is of a new project. I, I just think, you know, everything that we talk to everybody about solar says that's a better approach from the financial side. And the council could say yes or no, or even yes to a downsized version, which I know has happened once or twice. So you don't have, you wouldn't have to do the whole array, for example, on roof. You could, you can, there's different options. The expectation is the council will have that opportunity to do that as part of those larger scale construction projects.
Sounds good.
But that could be easily noted in the CIP.
Yeah, I think that would be, I think that would be worth, just coming from a, like my day job of, if you don't write it down, there are so many decisions that go on that we forget. And so I think it's worth, worth keeping that in mind.
Well, I also agree that if there's a document that's gonna be accessible to the public, that we're communicating to the public, that that's a policy direction we wanna go.
Yeah.
I still like the and.
Is there a report for mid-American? I think, I, there's a mid-American report I feel like that they put out in terms of like what's their balance on renewable versus non-renewable generation? I don't, I mean, just generally, if we could have that report emailed out to everybody just so that we could kind of utilize that, I think that would be worthwhile too.
I haven't seen one recently, but I know I used to get something.
Yeah, it's somewhere out there.
Annually from mid-American.
If we have it easily accessible.
And if we don't, I can probably get my hands on one.
I, yeah, I should be able to find it too.
All right. 42 renovations.
Yep. So what you have in front of you is, is the next two phases of the three-phase update to the facility itself. Phase one is in place. That's just moving around some interior walls to better utilize space. The next phase that we're proposing will be updates to the locker rooms, which were built for a different time. And then also we have some pretty significant plumbing issues that need to be addressed as part of that project in that phase. And then the third phase, the HVAC system, which will have been original at that point, will have clearly outlived its life and is already something that we're needing to look at replacing. The same with the generator for the building. So those are the three phases that we're talking about for station 42 over the next couple of years.
Is there any reason operationally, I mean, are you, I guess, are you okay with spreading these projects out?
Yeah, it, it made the most sense. So that this is the way to do it in a phased approach, so.
It's not going to negatively impact operations, pushing parts of it out or?
No, it, it's just gonna stretch it out, you know. There's just honestly some of the work, you know, we're, to fix the plumbing problem, we're gonna have to cut up floors. We'll just have to work around it. When we move the walls around, beginning in January and February, we'll work around it. Nothing that's gonna, nothing that's going to impact significantly our operational capabilities out of the building, so.
I take it that the sewer gas issue is not a health and safety concern per se immediately?
No.
Okay.
It's just a odor issue. When they laid the building X number of years ago, the plumbing line was laid flat. And there's just, we've had a couple of different companies come out, look at the building, and they've all said the same thing. There's no easy fix. You're just gonna have to cut up the floor and dig up the pipe and fix it. And it will, since we're cutting up the floors, that's the time that makes the most sense for us to adjust the male, or was it the traditional male and female group locker rooms? When they were constructed into a little bit more neutral, nega, or neutral gender facility, so.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks, Chief. And Chief Trahenson on the police station.
Curtis was supposed to be my wingman. Oh, here he comes. Thank goodness. Well, this project, you've been, put in front of you for several years now. So as David mentioned, gonna have an architect proposal in front of you tomorrow at council. So that'll be the, to me at least, that's a big determining factor in what this project's really gonna cost. Cause honestly, we've been speculating a little bit from that space needs study that was done several years ago. So I wouldn't get too set on that number. It may go down, it may go up. I'm not sure. Based on that study from several years ago, it's pretty hard to determine the cost and they just did a ballpark on it and that's what we've been using. So, yeah, answer any questions that you have? And we have been talking about solar from day one on this project, as well as geothermal and other ways that we can incorporate environmental factors into the building.
For, I'm assuming for the local option side, like this is the one, like I'm looking in 26 and it says we're funding 4 million from lost and we're spending 3 million in 26. I'm assuming there's that, that million difference, cause that's getting spent, it looks like in 28. So that's just, that's just keeping note of it. Sweet.
So not to be a pain, just a, just a quick overview. The, the square footage, and I know you did the study, and I'm just trying to recall, the square footage increases dramatically compared to the number of personnel. I mean, it triples basically. You're not tripling personnel. So can you remind me as to why that square footage jumps up that much?
One, one of the things about the square footage number, that 74,000 in there, you gotta remember that's an enclosed garage as well.
Okay.
So there's, there's some garage, and I can't remember the exact square foot number. That was garage.
I knew there was some reasoning behind that, but I couldn't call-
The building itself, if I remember, was like 50,000 square feet. So basically doubling what we have now.
Yeah.
In our discussions on, on this project, we really are wanting with the, with the cost of this, this building is gonna have to last us 40, maybe even 50 years. So if you think about the number of personnel that we're going to have at that time, and it's estimated to be, we would have about 100 sworn around that timeframe-ish, depending on how far out you're going, so.
That doubling makes sense. The tripling was what haunting me a little bit, but I forgot about the garage. I knew there was something. I had in the back of my mind, there was a reason for it.
And then the range is also going to be significantly bigger than what we currently have in our building. It's gonna go to a 50 yard instead of a 25. So there's some square footage ate up by the range as well. But again, I think the building itself was right around 50,000 square feet. And we're at 23-ish now with everything.
Yeah. Thank you.
And packed in. And they're packed if you go over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're on top of each other a little bit.
Yeah, I know that true. Yeah, I wasn't bothered by doubling at all. It was just tripling was freaking me out. But I, I knew there was a reason why. I just couldn't remember what it was.
Right. What will be the timing of the bond referendum?
November of 2026. So a year, you know, a little bit less than a year from now.
Why is the bond referendum as a funding source spread out over two years?
I should just camp up here too. Because we'll likely issue it into, there's no reason to issue 48 million dollars at the same time when it's a multi-year project. So the, the funding will match up with, the, the bond referendum itself will be a question to authorize the amount of debt. Doesn't say when you have to do it. So we'll spread it out. It may shift. It totally depends on what our timing is. And we'll know that more when our consultant helps us go through that architectural. I'll adjust based on that. But the bond question will be just for one big amount. Here's our authorization up to, and hopefully it'll come down because we'll continue to buy down with lost.
And do we need a super majority for that?
60%.
60% plus one.
Thank you.
Or maybe it's just 60%.
And I, this'll be a question I'm assuming when we actually get, like we'll get a number of like what would be the taxpayer impact of that whenever we do get a little bit more information from an architecture perspective and everything like that.
But it gets individualized letter now.
Yes.
And that, that'll be important when you're, when we're out discussing with the referendum is actually, you know, what, what we plan to do with the rate as a result of the project and so.
You know, for clarity's sake, it might be wise to have this description reference the range and the garage, especially the garage and that it's implied that a garage is not gonna be the same utility use that the building itself would be. And it would also help people recognize it's really not a tripling in size per se for less than a doubling of staff. I'm just thinking when we're saying there's gonna be a significant increase in operation expenses, I think people are gonna go, oh, well, we have to triple whatever it is. And that may not really be the case. And there could be a little clarity around that until those numbers are available.
Okay. That range extension, that's basically to keep us out of having to go to Fort Dodge and whatnot.
Yeah, so right now we go to Camp Dodge or we go to-
Sorry, Camp Dodge. You're right.
You're fine.
We knew what you meant.
I did.
Yep, and Altoona has, basically has the range that we're, you know, would like to see built. It's a 50 yard and we go over there as well and use that range as well. But yes, I can't, now I can't remember what the question was.
Oh, I was, that, that was, that, that answers my question. I was, yeah, the extension keeping us from having to do other stuff.
It's gonna allow us to do all those things at our own facility rather than relying on outside facilities to, cause right now we cannot shoot rifles or shotguns inside of our, our current range. We can only do handguns in there at this point.
Gotcha.
And you can do those at a 50 yard?
That's correct, yep.
A little shout out to our friends in Fort Dodge anyway.
David, what, what is the, like, kind of your timeframe on, I mean, we're gonna sign the, I mean, this is more than, right, what we need to know for the CIP. But, I mean, this is a really big deal and we're gonna all have to be working very hard to make sure that people understand the need for this. So I guess if you could give us kind of a high-level timeline of, I mean, we're gonna hopefully pick an architect tomorrow. I have not looked at the agenda, so.
We, yeah, the architect contract is on the agenda for tomorrow. We have a meeting, it may be this week, to lay out, in my mind, it's a Gantt chart. I don't know what it will, the final product will look like, but where it actually shows. The, the work on the referendum, there's a lot of data that talk about, that the research shows that if you get started too soon, that's not good. You really, you know, we wanna concentrate to a peak period, you know, a few months, a couple to a few months prior to the decision. But there will be a significant amount of information coming to the council on the timeline that we anticipate happening and based on the drawings and based on when we have the information. So we, we are, we're on that. We just got a meeting set up to discuss that sometime this week or next week. I can't remember which. Next week, Curtis tells me.
Thank you. And I will say that my family received four postcards from Dallas County related to their referendum. And it was totally worthless piece of info. I mean, it didn't really say anything other than what was on the ballot. But again, I'm sure the state told us that's what we have to do, so. And I love that my family got four of them because we have four voters, so. Didn't help it pass though. So we need to do a better job, but the bar is pretty, pretty low with Dallas County. Sorry.
Well, and some of the work that, frankly, the architects getting on board really is the work that, you know, we need to get started. And you can't really, I mean, I wouldn't know what to tell people right now because we still have to, you know, double affirm that the site is the right site. We have to look at cost estimates that are much more refined and sophisticated than what we've looked at. And so those are, you know, the, the costs are gonna be very critical, obviously in backing into a number, but also in communicating with the public. So, but we, we'll have time. We've got plenty of time.
When we did the committee for the fire station 43, which I was the chair of, I mean, the architect was our partner 100% in the whole, you know, public education process. So I know that's critical.
Do we have a sense of timeline from the architect about when they'd have like enough preliminary drawings and that kind of thing that we could really start to be getting in front of the public?
Yeah, I mean, I would say next spring and tomorrow night, when we talk about this item on the agenda. Angie Fonkoo, I'll lay out what's in the agenda before the council and then Angie Fonkoo will talk about the next steps.
Okay.
Leading up to referendum next November.
Great, thanks.
All right, anything further? All right, thanks Curtis. Thanks, Chief. Last project is the satellite site. John, you gonna do that one?
Let's see, yeah, this, this is a project out of our satellite site. It is an out-year. It would just be for additional paving and material storage. Just at, at this time, it's not really needed. We have enough storage and ability to use our current site on Hickman. So again, it's just in an out-year.
Then moving on to item 4.3, the major equipment.
I have a general question on major equipment.
Can it be solar powered?
I was curious. I'm assuming this is related to the Clive truck swap, but where are the fire trucks? Cause I think last time we had trucks and whatnot, so.
Where are the fire trucks?
Where are the fire trucks?
Actually, I just had a discussion today. Those will enter the CIP process next year.
Okay.
In terms of, we have a replacement schedule for our trucks that was adjusted when we got the truck from Clive. The next phase of purchases with regard to lead time and stuff, we're currently, would be out-year. So it's beyond where we need to be right now. The newest truck that we need to replace right now was purchased in 2019. So it, it's not in the next five years. That's why you don't see it yet, so. But we will start having, we will start seeing how we need to start putting those into the process beginning next year, so.
Are they still having crazy lead time?
I think the fact that they had to sit in front of Congress has adjusted their thinking on it a little bit. We are seeing some improvements in terms of what they're telling people in terms of times, so. Hopefully by the time we start having to go through that process, we'll be significantly down from where we are right now. Okay, so under equipment, again, this is something that has been on there for a while. Our self-contained breathing apparatus, so the tanks that we run our back have reached their end of life at 15 years, so we need to replace them. You will notice if you look at the previous years, this is down. We've lowered the cost estimate on this. We've removed the internal radio communications piece. That's the reason for the big drop. There haven't been enough advancements in that piece to leave it in. It just doesn't make any sense to spend money on something that we're going to end up not being able to utilize because it doesn't work. So we we've made an adjustment in the estimated price for the SCBA's. And that's the, what you've got in front of you tonight.
So that's, you would be using the existing radio system with the new SCBA's?
So our radios will function while you're wearing an SCBA. The previous SCBA's that we bought fourteen years ago had an integrated microphone system that we found out did not work.
Oh, okay.
And in the, honestly, intervening years, nobody's come up with anything any better. And since there's no improvement in what we got out of that, it didn't make any sense for us to continue. Plus, the improvements that they've made in the microphones in our new radios helps eliminate some of the the muffling problem that we were having previously. So we're going to move forward with the radio communications as is until they can come up with something that we think we have comfort in, will actually be reliable enough for us to move forward.
So a Chicago fire is yet again inaccurate.
Hard to believe.
Good to know.
So the only other item under major equipment is this fire tender. And for, just to remind you, that's out there in case of annexation. Some of the discussions about annexation include areas that do not have hydranted areas. And if we do annex those areas, we would need to consider purchasing a water tender to bring our own water with us until we can add hydrants. So, again, it's it's in an out year, and it's not definitely purchased and waits your decision on annexation if and when you decide to move that forward, so.
There are currently no areas that are not serviced?
No. As developers build, they are required to actually build the streets and the hydrants first. So that allows us, there is an occasional building that we have identified that are what we call long lay. But that just means we have to use multiple trucks to bring water in by the hose.
Are there any communities around us that already have a fire tender apparatus?
Yes. And if we have in a, if we were to have, like, an instant on the interstate, for example, or in a rural area where there are no hydrants because nothing has been developed yet, we have a plan to bring those, to call those tenders in.
Are those west of us or?
North and west.
North and west, okay.
So the point in which we do make an annexation, that would just come in, like, the next year? Or is it, or would it just enter the five-year window?
It would really depend on what you actually decided to annex, how far out we would go. We would need to go out and do an analysis and determine whether it made sense to purchase it ourselves, whether we needed to upgrade to an automatic response agreement. There there's a lot of different variables, really depending on where the annexation took place, the amount of space. Could we buy something used or just, does it make sense to just automaticate the entire thing? And so there's a lot of variables with that. It was put in place several years ago, pretty much just as a placeholder, just so that as you, as council, made discussions about it, they were just aware that, that we were asked what the impact would be in the fire department, and we were said, this is what it would take.
Thanks on that, chief. And technology.
A sticky note for where's the technology?
Is it empty? Oh, well, fair enough.
Well, that's easy. Parks, Jan and Scott.
We're going to take team. Do you want to try or do you want to? Okay. Let the fun begin.
First project is an out year, so we're just gonna, we'll have plenty to talk about when they're not out years.
Jan, I have to tell you, while you're getting set up, my daughters went to the park this weekend, and it was full. I mean, they said when they went last year, they had to, like, set up a timer to, you know, get their pictures, which is what they go for, but there were just tons of people all around. So that's what we want. It's awesome.
Molly and her staff are hitting it out of the park.
Sandy will be here Friday.
Ooh, Santa's coming on Friday.
That's right. We got the snow for him, so.
This is an out year as well. This would be a top priority if it ever becomes an option, but right now is an out year. Sylvan Ridge to Northview Park, this one is under design and, or, yeah, it's under design now, and it would be an eight-hundred-lanter-foot trail that connects Sylvan Ridge Park to Northview Park. Watford Road to Dallas County is out year as well. Trail from Seventy Second to Lochner. And as we evaluate all of our trails, we rate them according to the need for safety, and this is one of the, this is prioritized because of the condition, a lot of the seasonal deterioration with tree roots and and just deterioration from buckling. So this is a fifteen-hundred-foot total, take out the existing asphalt and put in concrete.
Good question. Did you, did you, did you skip?
Did you skip Rackin River Valley Regional Trail Connection?
No, we said that's an out year.
Oh, you just, okay. Because I was wondering what that was and where that was.
Sure, we can go back. That is a, no, one more. This is the one that it is a high priority once.
I'm getting dizzy.
It's like watching Google Earth, right?
Okay. So this one is west of One Hundred Twenty-Eighth Street, and it would connect to the Clive Greenbelt. It goes through private property right now. Right now, the the trail that goes through the regional park and down through Deer Ridge Park and so forth comes out on Rockland Drive, so it's not ideal. This one would go, we'd, that property is for sale. I don't think it's been purchased yet, but it did sell. Okay.
Oh, really? Is there an opportunity?
I have no interest.
All right, so.
Okay, thanks. I I missed, that's, I wasn't sure where it was, and so when you went.
Yeah.
Sounds like you're in the know, John. Is, are they rebuilding the house that's there? Is that what's going on? Did that person buy the whole property?
I just want to have animals that do not want public going through their property.
We're animals. So Barrett-Bosun Park, this is for twenty twenty-nine right now is proposed. The next phase would be a bridge from the east side of the park. There is a trail on the east side and then the creek, so it would connect that whole neighborhood to all the amenities that are on the west side. It'd be a thirty-foot steel truss bridge.
Is that, if you pop back there, you said that was down right there. Is, oh, I see, there's a, there's a trail connect that goes.
Yep, there's already a trail on the east side.
And the soonest we can get to that is twenty twenty-nine?
Yeah, just balancing all the other projects that we have. And we just finished the, this past year, we finished the other project. So there is always an opportunity. The Barrett-Bosun Foundation has been very generous with projects, but it's proposed in twenty-nine, just balancing all the other great projects we have.
And that, I mean, that current trail does connect up to the sidewalks there at least, right? Like, there's, there's.
So you can go up to Waterford and come back down, correct? Or to Hundred Fifty-Sixth Street.
Yeah, but who wants to do that?
People like convenience, certainly. So these next two projects, Bentley Ridge Park is a park we just acquired. Fortunately, we have a significant amount of parkland funds to the tune of six hundred thousand dollars or five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars of, oh, six hundred thousand dollars. So what we are proposing for Bentley Ridge, as well as the next page is Highland Meadows. So if you want to zoom out now, those two are kind of situated between Radiant Elementary School. So we would be looking at doing a site analysis or a site concept plan. So hiring a consultant to do both of these, as well as when we get to the regional park, we're proposing a site concept plan as well and getting community input. This would be the neighborhood input of what they'd like to see. Bentley Ridge is a little bit smaller. There's already a trail that goes through the middle of the park connecting to the school. So we would look at, one, community input and what would, what would they like to see, but also you'd want to complement what Radiant Elementary School already has. So that is what's proposed. And then for funding-wise, because we have a significant amount of parkland for Bentley Ridge, is that would be in twenty twenty-seven then. So twenty-six, we would get the concept plans for each three of those areas. Twenty-seven, because we have funding and parkland, we'd propose Bentley Ridge. And then this big purple one here is Highland Meadows, beautiful nine acres, pretty flat parkland. We have some really cool opportunities here. We'd be excited to see what a concept plan could come up with. We do have street, so potential street parking on on two sides of the park. And this could be, where usually we don't want to introduce some of those more significant or or regional-type amenities, but it could be a pickleball court. It could be some of those other amenities and add a small parking lot, because you don't want to introduce, obviously, neighborhood parking for those type of amenities. So we're really excited about Highland Meadows, proposing that then for twenty-eight. Again, just depending on what input and what proposed concepts, and that could be phased as well, obviously. And in the, in the CIP here, we're, we have that as a future continued development out there. With nine acres of pretty flat parkland, there's a lot of potential at that park.
At at probably minimum, there'd be a flushable restroom at at Highland Meadows, probably at least an open-air shelter as far as for a rentable shelter as well, too. Bentley Ridge, probably, there's no way for parking and stuff like that. So we might have a small gazebo-type shelter, but probably just kind of a playground, maybe a small court or something like that. But this one, obviously, with all that parking, is just phenomenal for that, so.
How do we end up with two parks so close together? I'm all for putting a park out there, just wondering.
That's how we like it out west.
All the parks.
Well, Barrett-Bosun and the one across the street, those are real close together.
A lot of, obviously, is when it gets developed. And you may or may not know, when we develop an area, if a developer has a hundred acres, ten percent has to go to parkland. So Bentley Ridge, they had more of a development, so that's why we have additional parkland. Some of it was land, and then some was funding. So this is based on the the neighborhoods that get developed and for the parkland. And this is one, usually we get an area that's non-developable, which a lot of our trails are in that, which is fine. That's where Highland Meadows is just a, quite a prize for for us to do parkland out there.
Agree.
And Bentley Ridge is as well, too. It's a great piece of property.
Yeah.
But it's just this much on-street parking next to it, and large and flat like that is really a great, outside the norm.
I'm getting a number of calls. People are buying lots out there and on both of these parks, asking what's going to be developed out there. So I'm glad they're doing their due diligence instead of listening what a Realtor is telling them. Because that, in my twenty-eight years with the city, that usually.
They're listening to their Realtor that there's going to be a pool.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
So we've kind of covered both of those parks. I don't know if there's questions on either one of them.
I was just going to comment that there would be some room, I think, for habitat restoration there that would really be valuable. Because you don't get any chunks anywhere. They're all in corridors.
This, this back in here, this small section is a great piece for that.
That, yeah, that would be sweet.
And we really are focusing on that and not just, obviously, not a CIP discussion, but with our timber studies and also with our upcoming budget, I think you'll be happy to see some of the recommended things.
I think even, you know, on top of the restoration topic, like, thinking of ways that we can pull people in from the community, too, because I know there was, there was a gentleman that came and was inquiring about restoration in a particular neighborhood or park area. You know, like, there are others in the community that I'm sure would really love to get plugged into this type of stuff and and be able to kind of regularly interact with that in setting up restoration areas or maintaining restoration areas or things like that. So just keeping that in mind from an engagement perspective.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah, there's a lot of people out there up for that. That guy was great, the rewilding guy.
Yeah. We did, I did follow up with him and invited him to be part of our process, so.
Excellent.
He lives in Vancouver now.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So this is a topic near and dear to our heart. We've been talking about it for years, the indoor-outdoor rec hub. Last year, we had it proposed twenty-six and twenty-seven, so two phases. We have two garage bays. And we have a great opportunity to use, utilize existing space. So with the, being a lot more cost-effective when you can address our deficiency in indoor space, repurposing existing space. What we are proposing is to focus on one of the garage bays so we can get some indoor community space. It could be rental space as well as indoor space that we can hold recreation classes and so forth. So focusing on that one area, seeing how that impact, as well as some of the other opportunities that we have within the community, and then coming back in twenty-eight to focus on that other garage bay. So that is what is being proposed for twenty twenty-six, is to repurpose that west end. And it would be, again, the, more of the community space, recreation opportunities on that site.
Is the gym that's called out there to replace what is, like, is the gym going to be like a city-focused, like, or like an employee-focused gym, kind of like how the the little house is?
No, that would be like recreations, and we use gym liberally, like, it would be a tiny, I mean, it's a garage bay gym, but no, it's not like an employee wellness center. It would be indoor space that we could do fitness classes and little kids' basketball and things like that.
Okay.
But that, again, would be the one in twenty twenty-eight. The one right now is to the west or that large garage bay where we could still use that. We're thinking of still using the the big garage door. You could make it into more of a a clear, where you can open it up, and then if somebody rents it, they can go out, perhaps just instead of artificial turf. We're looking at more cost-effective ways that you can just put it in the grass. So I think it'd be a really appealing opportunity for rental space as well as our outdoor yoga and outdoor movies and a pretty reasonable cost of doing that, we hope.
So this, this floor would be a concrete floor and what we're looking at for next year. And then we would work to try and incorporate, just right now, this is gravel lot. We try and switch that into more of a grass lot, so with some access points.
So so the, kind of the indoor-outdoor piece you're describing, is that in twenty-six or is that in twenty-eight? That's in twenty-six. Okay, all right. So there's actual opportunity for some level of income from that?
Yeah, it would be another rental space.
Well, I just note that in the letter from Tim Fitzgerald, he was talking about knowing a little bit more about the operating budget for this, since we're so on top of it. I imagine you guys are working on that, but it would be good to have a little better understanding of that. It might net out to be either a positive or not much negative at all.
We could do a comparable to some of our other park shelter rentals that we, because every one of those other parks rentals we use for rec classes, which we would here, and then weekends or whenever would be available for for rental. So, yeah, we certainly could do some preliminary projections on that.
Yeah, I think any indoor-outdoor spaces we have are going to be popular.
Definitely.
When will we expect to have design plans for the twenty twenty-six piece?
As soon as it gets approved in the CIP to move forward, we would work with the firm that, we have a master plan for this, for this facility. So we would work with that design firm.
We've actually already met with them two weeks ago, just to let them know it's back on the radar. It's coming up to try and get things in place. Again, ISG, the company we used merged with another, so we're using that, going to use that company to, I mean, they have all the plan sets and stuff. So they don't have a deep dive detail for construction, but they'd be able to move on that quickly, so.
Is is the the indoor space going to help consolidate some of the programming that we have spread around in other places? Is that one of the?
I would say, right now, we have such a deficit, we are at capacity. I would say, right now, we have such a deficit, we are at capacity. So some of the senior classes could be held there. We could expand, right now, adding, we can't really get into the schools. We're very limited. We can't get in after school, very limited on the others. So just being able to expand some of the program that we're doing.
Summer camps would be huge.
And this would be a, our summer camp right now is over at Givenetti, and it's challenges when we have rentals at night and so forth. This would be a perfect spot for that as well. So just, it certainly doesn't solve our indoor space issue, but it, it would help in regards to, right now, we're at capacity of programming at the three park shelters that we have.
Forgive me if you already answered this. When we talk about outdoor recreation and entertainment venue, what, what are we talking? There's, what, picnics, picnic area? What else is envisioned there?
That's focusing like on the yard area. We call the yard is the outdoor space. If it's artificial turf or we end up doing the grass part, where, again, people can rent it, we can do outdoor movies, we'll have picnic areas.
Yoga in the park.
Yoga in the park. So that's the outdoor. It came up during the, the Walker Johnson Master Plan discussion of an out year would be, would you do a splash pad there? That's now in the, the Walker Johnson Master Plan, so I don't think that would be a focus area for this site. Obviously, it's one or the other. We're not going to do both of those sites. So that is what we're looking at, indoor-outdoor. It could be eventually you add miniature golf or other potential bags or things like that. So once we get that outdoor yard area, there's a lot of potential of different things that you could do there. We've seen some really neat ideas in Minnesota.
Would it be possible to do this all in one project? I mean, I just think, I mean, I, I have a lot of things to say when we're done with this section, but, I mean, it seems, I mean, we need this kind of space. And so we also need other things, too, I know. And I'll talk about those later. But spreading them, it, I, it out, I don't, I don't, you know, and just doing half the bay at one time seems frustrating a little bit, but Jan is very patient. So I don't know. I think it's something to, something to consider.
We could, we can put some, put some thought into that and some numbers. And I also, we have something else that we can't discuss here that will be coming forward that I think could also be impactful. So stay tuned.
That is quite a teaser.
Yeah. I, I, the, the honest answer, though, is, you know, with all the things that we have programmed, if we did, put every, all our eggs into one basket on this project, you know, we did, it, it, it would definitely have an impact on the, on the financial side that we would want to get a better understanding of before we said yes to that without showing you the implications of it, especially since we moved some of these other projects up, but...
I guess that's something I'd like to float around for a little while and see what we could come up with. I mean, and maybe meeting in the middle in 27, I don't know. You guys know how to do this stuff more than I do.
We'll put some thoughts, we'll put some thoughts into it. This project could, could change.
Yeah, I think it would be, because we have another meeting next Tuesday, we certainly can talk what options there might be.
So with the, with the project status section here, it says Phase Two, 2027. That would be 2028, right?
Good catch.
Okay.
Yeah, always. Attention the detail.
I finally found where it said the demolition of the existing wellness center. I thought I evaporated that, like, I thought I just made that up in my head. So what is, so with the demolition of the existing wellness center, is that just a, we don't see a need for an employee wellness center on campus? Or like, is it, is it just a lack of use thing? I guess I'm curious about what the rationale behind that was.
I think our thought process is, once both of those areas are done, that could be a parking area as we need to. The goal would be not to have to add additional parking, like, north of the, or just south of the library, parking lot or others, if we could accommodate within the current parking in the library, as well as that area where the wellness center is. And we've, are looking at different options. It's kind of what comes first of, of still looking at what are the other opportunities in that we can provide our employees for wellness opportunities, perhaps at other fitness clubs and things like that. So we certainly are looking at that, but that's the mindset of, one, to get an old house out of the way, so we have a, a nice new facility here, but also we need that additional parking as we start programming more here.
That makes sense. So, so there is, there is some conversations about providing support for employee wellness center.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Yep. Next project is Jaclyn Balden Dunlap Park in Arboretum. Proposing in 2029 is, the next phase in the master plan would be the, the Memorial Garden. And we've discussed this with the foundation, and they said as well, because the foundation, if you recall, funds 50% of the projects, and said we just are getting done with a pretty significant one with the restroom, to take a break for a few years and evaluate then of, one makes the most sense for the Memorial Garden. But the foundation would like to tap the brakes a little bit of, of spending as well. So it was kind of a joint decision of, and maybe it would move up to, to 28, just as we evaluate and as the foundation looks at the available funding and so forth. Lyons Park's improvements, so Phase Three is nearly complete, completed. The next phase in the master plan would be the renovation of the gazebo. It certainly is a significant iconic piece in, in Urbandale, but we would be looking at reconstruction of it. And it's a wood-based structure. It's deteriorating, needs some upgrades. Also, we'd like to make it more like handicaps accessible, so you can wheel right onto it and walk right onto it and so forth. So that's the proposed next phase in 2028, and the rest would be future.
Is the gazebo, like, with the gazebo changes or renovation, is it, is the idea that we're looking to kind of keep the same character of it or innovate a little bit?
No, it would, again, like Jan said, handicap accessible, probably a concrete floor to wood floor now, which isn't great. We'd probably want to upgrade some of these, the electrical hookups and that kind of stuff. We would keep it the same look, probably a steel-based building as opposed to wood, and then keep it as, look as close to the same as we really would, so, is the goal, right? So.
Yeah.
Any consideration given to screening or anything like that? It's, it can be a very itchy spot in the, and it's beautiful.
That certainly could be something that we look at.
If nothing else, maybe rolled up mosquito net that you can bring down. I don't know. It's just something to think about.
Yep.
If we're going to rebuild it.
This Northport Carter is an out year.
I thought this project, like, officially died, like...
Probably can and did. It was being pushed or, or driven by Delta Dental. I don't think that's the case anymore. So this is mostly driven by the business of the area. So it's not a whole lot of funding with the city. So it could be a project that eventually falls out of the CIP.
If the zip codes get fixed, does it get named to Zip Code Park? Zip Cor, Zip Code Celebratory Park?
Corridor.
Corridor. Zip Code Corridor Park.
So the playground replacements, each year, we look to replace different playgrounds based again, similar, like when we evaluate our trails, we evaluate the playgrounds. And after 15 years of, of the life cycle of a playground, so the upcoming in 26 would be Best Land, Foxdale and Lakeview Park. And then each year, we'd be looking at addressing, some of them are just replacing some of the equipment, some is enlarging the footprint. So depending on that is how many, or some is adding pour and play. As I say every year, we would love to have the pour and play, which is the rubberized surfacing, but that's significantly more cost, obviously. So it's kind of the question, sometimes you want a playground or you just want rubberized surfacing sitting there? So we do the balance of that. So each year, we look to incrementally.
Is, are the orange dots in the map what we're talking about here? Because that, that was, I was trying to look all these up and...
Yeah, so in your CIP, it shows under which year. So Best Land Park, Foxdale and Lakeview would be in 26. J.C. Hallbrook. Doctor Softball Complex would be the next year. So yeah, the little dots. We can zoom in on them if you'd like, but those are the parks we'd be looking at. So shelters and flushable restrooms, kind of the same type of concept here. We look at, as parks are developed, and obviously, as you know, that in our master plan, flushable restrooms is a top priority, so we're looking to do that this year. Recommendation is to put a set amount each year, and again, that if we don't spend that whole amount, it carries over to the next. So in, in 2026 would be the planning and construction of open shelters at Waterford Park, open shelter at the Dog Park, and a gazebo at the Dog Park. One of the, we get a lot of compliments of the Dog Park. The biggest request or concern is shade. So that's why a lot of the, like in Ankeny, they have at the entrance is a shade area. So we really would like to focus that. We do get a question would be at the small dog or large dog area. I would say a lot of small dogs go to the large dog area, so it would be over the large dog entrance, and then the gazebo or shade structure over picnic tables would be in the large dog area as well. And again, the, the, I don't think I need to read each of the, the next years, but I certainly can answer any questions on those.
Well, the Walker Johnson Park, some of the Walker Johnson Park, like by the tennis court and stuff like that. So it's just prompted a question that I've had for a long, why haven't we worked out a way, or could we work out a way, to make the restroom at the Givenetti Shelter available? And then what really does happen in a tornado? How do people use that shelter? So those are two questions I've had about that for a long time and never got them asked until today.
So part of the master plan, we looked at, do we add a outdoor restroom on the north and similar to Lyons Park? It's a, you have an indoor restroom, but then you have an outdoor access restroom. So that could be a possibility. We did look at that in the master plan and said, you know what? If we add a splash pad and other play features just south of the Givenetti Shelter, it would make more sense for a restroom there. In regards to your second question?
Yeah, tornado.
Yes, do you want to?
So yeah, the, the doors are equipped to open up when, when, when park hours are open, so from six to 10:30, the doors would automatically open. We have a contract with Permar then to go check on the facility when those doors open, when the sirens go off, the doors open.
So the sirens go off, the doors automatically?
Automatically.
Okay.
So during, I should, not always Permar, like, if it's during the day, our staff would check on it then, because there is requirements that FEMA has that you, there's some checklist things that have to happen. And then, again, when they're open, Permar goes, they'd be there to make sure it gets locked back up, all of those things as well, too. So that's the, open automatically, so.
Okay.
When you say open, like literally open or unlocked?
Unlocked.
Got it.
Unlocked, sorry. And then you have to go inside the, the main room. The hallways are not a protected area, but inside the main room.
Yeah, but they're triggered by the sirens.
I've just always wondered. Been to that park many times, and I know someday I'll be there and a siren goes off.
A quick question about the shelters, just in general. Is it, like, for the rentable shelters, is our criteria for like a rentable shelter, if it's got a bathroom, or just like, how do we decide whether it's a rentable versus a not-rentable shelter?
You, bath, usually bathroom and quite often parking lot as well, too.
Parking lot, gotcha.
Are kind of our two things that we have to buy.
So would, would either of these be rentable shelters, then? I, I don't think either of these mention a bathroom, but...
The Waterford would because it has the parking lot.
Gotcha.
And it has a Kaibo there. Yeah. And the Dog Park. We wouldn't reserve that one because it's at the Dog Park.
And then the Walker Johnson one, that would just be, as of right now, would probably just be a restroom. We don't rent that one right now. It is just next to the tennis courts, so we don't rent that. You can rent the tennis courts if you want to, but we're not busy.
Just something to think about, too, and, you know, like, this, this can be something we can also think about with the Walker Johnson plan in general, too. I've received some comments just over time about the pickleball courts on the northwest side. There's not really, the comment was, there's not a real lot of shade option there. Like, one gentleman was saying, like, he just brings an umbrella and like sticks it out, basically get some shade when he's out there. I didn't know if there was consideration or thoughts that could go into that, minor shade or a shaded bench or some, you know, something. It doesn't have to be massive.
And those would be operational, probably, not CIP, but yeah, those are something we could look at for sure.
Yeah, I think that'd be worth thinking about.
We're, we'll put anything in the budget if you want to. I don't know if it's going to get past Nikki and David, but yeah, we certainly can look at that.
They'll just make us take something out, isn't that possible?
Yeah. The next one is utility installation in various parks. This kind of complements the shelter and flushable restroom. So as we just had mentioned, Waterford Park in 26, so the utilities for that park and the Dog Park would, would be out of this budget. And then, again, the next one would be Bentley Ridge. So just kind of coordinating the two. We just have two different, two different accounts for two different of the project.
And those would just be electric from those two.
Yeah.
We're not talking about bathrooms at the Dog Park, are we?
No.
That'd be real nice. That one in Wakegan is really, really, really nice.
Time and money. Put it on the list, I guess.
Does everybody know I got a dog this weekend?
No.
No.
I thought I sent a picture, but yeah.
No.
I got another dog this weekend.
Happy dog.
Congratulations.
I know. I'll show you pictures if you want to see it.
Something I've mentioned.
You licensed? Adoption is not yet finalized and have not yet licensed her.
Sounds like a no.
When the license is final, or when the adoption is finalized, we will get right on that. For the reminder, though, Amy.
Chief's already gone.
So, so one of the concerns I've had is that when we're trying to get kids into these creeks and streams, it's really important that they wash their hands when they're done. And so I've been thinking about us maybe trying to take a lead. I've been trying to get Icon to get involved in this process as well. Low-key, not announced to the whole Icon folks yet. So if anybody's listening, don't feel bad about your Icon folks, they haven't had that chance. But to have hand washing stations. And obviously, would make a lot of sense to have one over by the limestone steps that lead down to North Walnut Creek. So I don't have any idea what that would cost or whether it would elevate to the level of CIP. It might be so low-cost it wouldn't. But it's one thing that I really think needs to be on our plate sooner rather than later, and we need to figure that out. And I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get some Icon resources to do it with, but I think we need to be thinking about that.
We did order a gel one that, that you can sanitize with. It's not a full wash station.
Yeah.
Sanitary sewer is, gets difficult. So it, it probably would be a CIP item if we did that, to get, one is to get the water there, and then you got to get it away.
Right.
And tapping into sanitary sewer. So we, originally, we thought about a drinking fountain over there, but it was cost prohibitive to try and get back on the other side of GEO to get the sanitary sewer away on that.
It's not just water access now.
Right.
Last year, we wanted sanitary sewer.
But we do have a hand washing station, again, one with the foam gel, you know, that you, something, right?
Yeah, it's better than nothing, yeah.
We'd love to be the pilot community.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm going to work on that for us.
Perfect. The next page, Walker Johnson Maintenance Shed. So this one is, we are proposing to move forward in 27. It's kind of a lower cost one, is there is, inside there is a restroom, but it's not outside access, is to do a remodel so we can have outside access for the, for the community and for the public, for, that is one of the highest... For, that is one of the highest requests. Next, the shade is a restroom that's closer to the.
Are the big screen TVs still in there?
Uh, it's on the other side. That's, yeah. But yeah, the
Put a big window for it.
The little man cave in there.
Yeah. That's an old.
Yep. Sure is.
It's our subject, isn't it? Sorry.
So proposed for the Walker Johnson Park improvements, and we just went through this, uh, recently. So we are proposing the softball field renovations. That is the, the most crucial need in the park and the grading of the, the soccer field. So proposed in twenty-six is the design of that. And then moving forward in twenty-twenty-eight, and we put it in twenty-eight because it's an interesting timing. A whole season would have to be out of service essentially for, we'd lose a whole season of, of rentals and softball and baseball and things like that. So, um, getting that all designed in, in twenty-six, the, the teams and everything could be prepared for, okay, in twenty-eight. Uh, we do have some trepidation of, I don't know if our lights are going to, one of the four fields is already, we don't have lights in it. Just, we can't get parts anymore. So, the facility staff with the electrician said the odds of another field going out before twenty-eight are in the, when you scavenge one field to, to get another, you can't guarantee that those are gonna work on the other one too, so.
They're not near as optimistic as we are though.
And the, how, what that affects is evening usage and then as you get into the fall, is you can't do tournaments, um, into the evening as well. So that is what's proposed for that phase and then obviously the other ones that we went over in the master plan would be out years.
Do I recall correctly when, like one of those fields has drainage issues too? Would that, that would kind of be remedied as part of this process?
Absolutely.
Two of them have some drainage issues that.
Yeah, on the west side. Yep. Great question. Waterford Far, Park Disc Golf, uh, we are proposing, uh, with the renovations is to add a, uh, a bridge that could really enhance our opportunities on that south side of Waterford. Um, and it actually, these renovations, we'd focus on the whole park south of Waterford. So it's kind of showing north of Waterford, but being able to do a bridge on that, um, north. I guess I don't, specifically whatever side, so we can use some of the land on the, the west of, of that park as well and really enhance that disc golf, um, expansion. And we have been in touch with Gannon and would love to tap into his expertise to, um, get his input. And maybe his sponsors would love to be part of this as well. You know, Jan Herkey and Scott will be asking that question, so.
Me, I, you know, that just makes so much sense to me that this is like his home.
I mean, he lives
Home course.
Literally in this backyard, so we're hoping that that could be some leverage.
Really lean into that.
Yes.
Don't remind him of his, uh, missed buckets.
Well, that was the equipment.
It was, it was definitely, he had too much power.
Yeah, definitely the portable wimpy ones were. But yeah, his mom did follow up and was so appreciative of the acknowledgement, so we certainly thank you as, as council and mayor for doing that. Water trails, this would be for the Walnut Creek Regional Park. Uh, we put it in the out year. I did submit a grant for this. Um, so we will be finding out hopefully in the next couple of months, maybe. I don't even know when the, um, deadline was. But I did.
Grant to whom? To Icon?
Icon.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good to know. All right.
So, yeah, whatever your leverage is, but, um, yeah, we submitted it previous year and then we submitted it this year. So, um, I did, uh, mention to them, right now it's an out year, but depending on when funding would be available then, it certainly helps with leverage when you have, uh, I think a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant is what we submitted for.
So if we got the grant, we could go ahead and do it, is what you're saying. Move it up, right up.
We'd certainly have to find additional funding in the CIP, but it would help move it up from an out year. I would anticipate, but that would be your decision as council.
Because that was the note I made, was it would make sense to move this up, especially since we're trying to increase our visibility out there and do more work out there at that, that the cost here is so minimal compared to other costs. Um, plus it's really, those are prized amenities. People are already using those limestone steps and we haven't even had grand opening, you know, exactly.
Yeah.
I'll check on the grant.
Okay, that'd be great. So the Walnut Creek Regional Park, certainly some wonderful changes to the budget and to what is being proposed. So, as I mentioned, when we talked about Bentley Ridge Park and Highland Meadows Park, we are proposing to do a, um, park site amenity, um, plan. So essentially getting neighborhood and community input. And the goal is of, we have this area, we want to make sure that one, there's space for it. You don't want to do something that's, you know, an undersized shelter that now you've kind of missed opportunities for the future. But also, you know, is there space that you could hold for someday? Maybe there is an indoor facility. But you don't want to put in a parking lot and a restroom and all of a sudden it's not in the right spot. Or should it be this amenity and the community would like another amenity? So that's what we'll be doing in twenty-six, getting that input, getting the layout. And then, uh, we have funding in each of the upcoming years then to be able to start picking away at that.
Jan, we talked about REAP funding. Does that impact this space at all?
The facilities area, this fifteen acres north of Aurora up to Meredith was purchased specifically for a facilities area. So REAP funding was not used for that.
I assume REAP funding was south of Aurora?
Correct.
Okay. That's helpful, thank you.
Yep.
Could you enlighten me on REAP funding?
Essentially, most of this park was purchased with REAP funds. And you probably know as much as I do, but it's restricted of what it can be used for. It can't be active ball fields. It can't be essentially intentionally bringing people there for recreation. I did learn if you just put up goals and you don't stripe the fields and it's just open for play, that's okay. But you can't be coordinated, I even asked at one point, could it be a cross-country route? And that's not allowed either, so just a passive outdoor recreation is what it can be used for.
That was a REAP purchase and not Lockon?
Yeah.
That sounds like Lockon.
No, it was REAP.
It was REAP since nineteen ninety-five, a significant amount of this park.
And those, yeah, those are, those six F, those are federal funds are similarly restricted.
Yeah, it sounded, it sounds more like Lockon than REAP. I wonder if that, um, they use some Lockon money.
Yeah, I just emailed Kathleen Minch last week about it.
It was all REAP. I mean, I was on number, I mean.
Yeah, well, they might have put some Lockon money into, that's what I bet they did. Okay, anyway, yeah. Good.
And the Walnut Creek Regional Park splash pad was moved up, uh, proposed moved up to next year. So that would be right next to the, um, regional playground. And we have that graded already, so we would, once this gets approved in January, we'd be able to move forward with the, the design of that and get that hopefully constructed by the fall of twenty-six. Out years, we are proposing, uh, to do a small playground north of the la, large shelter, somewhere along the large shelter. Essentially of when somebody's renting this area, it's kind of nice to have some type of activity and play activities for those that are renting and not all the way south of the parking lot. And then also something to complement the small park shelter on the north side of Aurora, um, with a small play feature playground there as well. So that's what's depicted or shown in the out year. In that, we are very excited for what is, um, in the budget and proposed. And we'll have very busy years coming up if this gets approved. We're excited.
Well, my only comment would be to see if there's a couple of these things, uh, for Walnut Creek that we can, Walnut Creek Regional Park that we can move up if possible. And it sounds like the Icon grant might help one of them. I don't know about the playground, um, but it just seems like it would make some sense to really put a little juice. The, the splash pad's great, but to go beyond that a little bit if we could, I think we've, we're being encouraged to pay attention.
And I think in that northwest corner, the facilities area is, that's
There's some good funding there.
A lot of juice in there.
There's a lot of juice in there, but we don't even know what that looks, you know, we don't even know what that is yet.
Hopefully that there'll be patience for one more year and then we'll get that visual of saying, okay, now here's how we're gonna, and we come to the CIP then next year of saying, here's how we propose to phase that.
Yeah.
That's when the community, you know, certainly can, obviously during the process of what would you like to see and, and so forth, we'll get their input, but then prioritizing that, I think would be important too. Obviously a parking lot will be the number one thing and a restroom, but from there, what are the amenities?
Yeah, and that will add some energy to the whole thing too, just doing the public engagement piece. I appreciate that, yeah.
So my post-it note on this page is, how many years until residents can actually do something? Which I think is a follow-up to Pat's comment. I mean, I'm very excited about this. My comments were, were a little more negative towards the front of the section because you waited till the end of this section to, to, uh,
Unveil the huge exciting.
I mean, that I guess is my only, you know, we're doing great kid stuff out there, you know, in the splash pad. But like, now that my foot is on the mend, you know, I, I did buy a pickleball set and I'd like to love, you know, play pickleball or have my kids play sand volleyball or, you know, have a backstop.
Twenty-seven, we'll be doing that.
So, um, so yes, I'm very, very excited to see the, uh, the commitment to putting, uh, putting, uh, amenities in, uh, the western part of our community, but I, um, am not as patient. Um, you know, every time I look at my Facebook memories, you know, it is, come to the city council meeting, call Bob Andwig and tell him you want to, you want a pool, you know, like, and these were, this was ten plus years ago. So I, you know, I have more baggage than the average, uh, person up here on this. But, um, I'm very excited and I don't want to sound ungrateful, but like I'm just, I want to have stuff.
She's jumping at the bit.
I have a lot of baggage.
And you do, you do. Cause I put your, I put your email and phone number on a lot of Facebook posts.
I didn't have a vote then.
Well, I think, I think adding some real energy around the planning of it with, with obviously the, the promise of being able to do something very, very soon after is, is a real plus. And, and with the splash pad happening simultaneously.
Having the splash pad is a significant investment in twenty-six.
Well, I mean, we, to say we are doing, you know, we have the money budgeted to do these projects. Come tell us what you want us to do and in what order you want them done.
Yeah.
Cause we've heard a lot, you know, my other post-it is, but I still want a pool. So, um, you know, I think, you know, we went through with RecPlex and, you know, we've been sold a lot of Realtor promises um, of what was hap, what was going to come. So I think really telling that story that this is happening when, um, well, just at least until the state pulls the rugs out from under us. But, you know, want, tell that story when we are, um, soliciting input, but no, I'm very excited, so.
We thought the engagement was, was important, you know, that it's, before we rush too, too fast into things, we wanted to do the same level of engagement there that we've done for other projects, cause you know, we thought that made sense. But the splash pad with all the families and all the kids, it's, it's a, I think it's a safe bet to go ahead and advance that.
Well, and that'll give us an opportunity to have a spot or a site where people can come gather and we can start getting really good input because they'll be there, yeah.
That's it for parks. Any questions?
Thank you, Jan. And that takes us to the end of tonight's presentations, so. Unless there's something else for the good of the order, we will adjourn for tonight and we will see you tomorrow night for our regular.